Good evening, everybody. It's November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It's seven thirty in the evening. We're here at the Newbury Municipal Offices, twelve Kentway in Byfield, and this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have Martha Taylor, our town planner. We have Mario Carnavalli, who is a zoning board member. Eric Svan, Chair of the Zoning Board. We have Michelle Wheeler, who is an associate member. We have Jack Kelly, who's a member. And we have Larry Murphy, who's our liaison from the planning board. So, welcome, everybody. Mark, would you read the first hearing?
First hearing on the agenda. Gage Foley, seven Bittersweet Lane, the applicant requesting a variance for reducing the requirements of the Newbury zoning bylaws, section ninety-seven, five D, common driveways by special permit only, sections ninety-seven, five D, four B, fourth crown driveway cross-section, and ninety-seven, five D, four B, six driveway intersection angle related to the proposed modifications to an existing two-lot common driveway to serve a third lot. Question and relief is to allow portions of the driveway to be super elevated instead of crowned, to allow angle of the intersection with Bittersweet Lane to remain at thirty degrees instead of sixty degrees required in a property located at seven Bittersweet Lane or mess.
Good evening. Steve Sawyer from GM Two Associates. I'm here with Gage Foley, the homeowner. I think I'll just give a brief history of this project. So, this subdivision with three homes at the, or three lots at the end, subdivided probably about twenty years ago or so. At that time, there was a common driveway that was constructed to service the three lots, which two, they built an additional home, so it serviced the two homes at the end of Bittersweet Lane. It's basically the Foley family. The grandfather owns up the original parcel, and now the grandkids are taking over the three parcels. So, Gage is, Gage and his wife are now constructing a building on the third lot. Unfortunately, he's hit the trifecta. He had to go to conservation, which we got an order of conditions. And then, given there wasn't an existing common driveway, I don't believe it was permitted back twenty years ago, there wasn't a running permit with that. So with that, we had to update the common driveway special permit. The common driveway special permit allows the three homes, which this is, it's the third home added to the driveway. As we're going through the process, the existing driveway width, I can probably just pop over here. So, the existing driveway launches off the end of Bittersweet here, at an acute angle. There's an existing home here. The three homes are all located well off the end of Bittersweet. The two, there's an existing home here, existing home here, and Gage is building his home in this lot. So, the existing common driveway is in very good repair. It's in good shape. It is paved recently. The only issue is it was only twelve, I believe, twelve and a half to twelve feet or so wide. So, the provisions now require it to be sixteen. So, with the special permit, we're widening the roadway. And then, in the process, the fire department, they said, hey, you know, they thought it was adequate. Gage is like, hey, is there any reason we can't keep it as it is? It's functioning fine. There's plenty of room for cars, for trucks to drive on the edge. So, when Martha asked about the ability for the planning board to waive the width, town council said, no, no, you can't do that because the provisions are in the zoning bylaws versus the subdivision regs. So, the planning board typically will waive subdivision requirements for CSP, for open space designs. So, all of a sudden, it said, well, now we get a problem. Because the existing geometry of it, what they say in the zoning is it should come in at sixty degrees. The current angle is about thirty degrees. So, that's one of the regulations. That's one of the provisions, that the minimum intersection angle is thirty degrees, or sixty degrees. So, I did show the alignment if you were to rebuild it and build it properly to, or toward the, for the regulations requirement of sixty degrees, you'd have to plunge into the property a bit, create an unneeded bends. You have two reverse bends to bring it back to get to the houses at the rear, to go off to the rear. With that, you end up putting the driveway much closer to the bordering vegetated wetland, so there's impacted buffer area, and also just unneeded construction and impact. So, I think as far as with that, there is, you know, we gotta talk about hardship. I would say this one is, definitely meets the lot shape and, lot shape and topography. As you can see, all the homes are off the very end of the, of the drive here. So, it wouldn't make sense for this to be more perpendicular to that, to the roadway. It makes more sense to launch off at that acute angle. The other item is, the reason they don't have, they like it to be at a more perpendicular angle is to look for cars coming from the left. Here, the road, you're basically at the end of the road. The only thing at the, the only drive, it's only one driveway to a single-family home that launches straight off the end. So, the roadway doesn't continue beyond that point, so there's really no safety concern as far as for that thirty-degree angle. So, then the other provision that we're, we're asking for variance on is the cross-section of the road. The provisions ask or require that it be a crown, a crown driveway. Right now, it's constructed super, the natural topography is from, when you're coming in from left to right, and the water flows across the property down towards, you know, across the grass in such, in this manner. So, the first, probably two-thirds, I believe, is, actually, no, the first two-thirds is crowned, which remains crowned, and here's where the angle gets deeper, and it's super elevated. And it really doesn't make sense, it's draining perfectly now. We often, in subdivision roads, we often create a super-elevated road for drainage purposes, if it makes sense with the topography, and that's what we're maintaining with this case. We are widening it to meet the sixteen feet, so we wouldn't be, we're not asking for a variance for that. Basically, we're just asking for the variance to maintain it in its existing condition as it exists today. It's been functioning perfectly for twenty years. And also, not to have to dig up and rebuild the road, the driveway, for the fact that, to create a crown, which isn't really necessary, it's not necessary with, with this construction. So, that is, that's it in a nutshell. I've tried to keep it brief, and I'd love to take some questions.
Great. I could probably have a few. Thank you. Okay.
Mario, Jack, Michelle. So, you are planning to do sixteen feet of the road?
Yes.
And does it have a thirty-foot easement?
Yes.
After sixteen feet?
Yes. It's, yeah, we meet the required easement width in the regulations and also the roadway width.
The intersection angle, and Larry, this might be few, but is that, was that an original subdivision?
No, the problem is that it's in the bylaw as opposed to our regulations. If it were our regulations, we could waive it. But because it's in the bylaw, it requires variance. And I will tell you that the planning board unanimously supports the petition. It just makes sense for this, for this project.
To answer your question, these lots were created through A and R, not as a subdivision.
Okay. I was just trying to see if there was a timeline or something came before or after lots subdivision.
I think they were created back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
Ninety, it's, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, or two, somewhere around that, yeah. Between ninety-eight and two thousand, I think.
Right. And all these lots were created at that time.
Yeah, and all the lots are conforming. They conform, they, as they exist today, they're fully conform.
Would Bittersweet ever be extended?
No, there's no possibility.
Possible way of that? And if you could just explain in simple terms what super-elevated means?
Oh, how's this? So, you know, when you drive down a typical road, and you look at the center line, typically it's high in the center line, it's crowned, so the water sheet's off to either side. So, when it's super-elevated, what it is, it's just tilted in one direction. And so, it, you know, the natural topography, it's high on the, when you're coming in, it's higher on the right, lower on the left. So, it just maintains the sheet flow across the road.
Okay. Jack, Michelle, leave.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I have a number, familiar with the area, and this may sound kind of silly. Is there a stop sign at the end of Bittersweet, down at the end?
I don't think there is.
At the end of Bittersweet, when you go back out to Green?
Green Street.
Probably not. A lot of times in small roads, they don't, it's just inferred, and people stop.
Then I'm certainly okay with the angle at the end.
Okay. And if you would repeat for us just the conditions of the land that you feel are in favor of a variance?
So, it's the, the conditions of the land. Number one, we have a bordering vegetated wetland to the south, which this angle, if we implement the sixty-degree angle, it pushes the road further into the buffer area closer to the wetland. So, we have the BBW to the south. And then, more importantly, the three homes are all located off the end of the road. Where they're, you know, typically, when you do a driveway, the homes would be off the side of the road. But these three homes are off the end. They're very long, narrow lots. So, the lot shape warrants the fact that this road should come off in that direction to, to service those three homes.
Do you understand the condition of the land in terms of variance?
I was there today. I kind of saw.
Okay.
That's awesome. Topography for the super elevation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Martha. Yeah, so, yeah, topography, celestial topography. So, for the super elevation, the road, the natural drainage course and land, landslope is from right to left. So, we're looking to maintain that drainage pattern, the topography.
If it wasn't super elevated, the only means would be to provide some kind of drainage structures or?
You would, yeah, you'd end up, well, if it was, yeah, if you created, if you created a crown at that location, and it would be ponding on one side of the road, actually, is what would happen.
And then you'd have to relieve it, or?
Yeah.
It would have to find its natural way somewhere.
Yes.
And Mark, does the planning board, in terms of the subdivision and the civil drainage, find that acceptable, or is it, is drainage flow across a natural path of?
Our peer review engineer, Joseph Lucke, has reviewed this, and he was satisfied.
Okay. And so, this went before the planning board, and then, then town council weighed in?
Yeah, so what happened, it came before the planning board as a special permit, and as Steve said, there was a request from the applicant to see if the board would allow them to keep the existing driveway width instead of bringing it up to the required sixty feet width. And I consulted with town council on that, who, in going through the bylaw, it became clear that the board did not actually have, the planning board did not have the authority to grant any waivers on any of the dimensional requirements in the bylaw. So, that's, that's when we actually realized that the angle of intersection and the cross-section of the driveway were both an issue, as proposed. So, as Larry said, the board went through all of those and unanimously supports these two.
Yeah, if we had, if we had the authority to grant the waivers, we would have.
Okay. Is that mine? Any more to debate?
I'm done.
So, we'll close the public meeting and, oh, sorry.
And just one more thing. So, we stopped the planning board process to send them to you guys and continued this hearing, our planning board hearing, to the December twentieth.
You guys wanted sixty feet. That was sixteen feet for the width and thirty feet?
Sixteen feet for the width. The other, the board was not in support of keeping, keeping it at twelve feet.
It's so wrapped up what you were saying, Martha.
Yep, so that was.
All right, so, Rick, you'll rest your case. I think we've got all information and questions, and at this point, I'll open it up to the public to see if there are anybody that would like to speak in favor of the project.
In favor?
In favor, just state your name and address, please.
Forty-three A Hanover, Diane Lainer.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that's opposed that would like to speak? No one? Okay. With that, then, I would ask for a motion.
I'd like, I'd make a motion to request the variance as proposed, with the conditions of sixteen feet with road and thirty feet easement, and we're okay with the thirty-degree angle to the street.
Okay. And before I ask for a, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? I think we would, we would add the condition of, the conditions for meeting pay variance due to the conditions of the land, of wetland, lot shape, and topography. Let me know when you're.
Kind of got it.
Okay. And then, we would also add that the zoning board has heard and taken the recommendation of the, of the planning board, understanding the history of review that the planning board has taken and the, and the means for which this appeared in front of the zoning board. Okay. So, with that, is there a vote? Mario?
Aye.
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 All right, so it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the next presentation. Would you like your site going back?
Next one. Vincent Goode, the College Commercial Sunset Club, two, eight Old Point Road. The applicant is requesting a special permit slash finding for the leak from the Newbury zoning bylaws, section ninety-seven, four D, four, change of use, to allow modifications to the property, including installation of a forty-by-forty pavilion, eight-by-twenty storage container on the site, and to approve the use of a seven-by-thirty section of the site for removal of storage sheds. Modifications required amendment of the zoning board, ill-decided dated January nineteen twenty twenty-one, for the property located at two dash eight Old Point Road.
Hey.
Thank you. I'm Vincent Goode, and I'm here with my partners, Jeff Christiansen, Bo Sirm, and Josh Childs. And we're the owners of the property, as well as partners in the business of Sunset Club. We're here looking to make a few modifications to the, the plan that was approved a few years ago now. I wanted to just start with maybe a quick history of the site, because I'm not sure all of you were here for the process of getting this approved, so. Sorry, I don't have the fancy, I got the old train. So, the property where Sunset Club is entails this, these two lots that were merged as part of the initial approval. We also own properties that are all around the property on pretty much every direction. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we, we got an initial approval done for a change of use, because this was initially a auto repair shop that was located right over here, as well as using an existing barn over here with a single-family house in the middle, as well as another single-family house over here on the corner. It got approved for a larger, two- or three-story, almost six thousand square foot structure right here on the corner, and that use was approved then. Unfortunately, with COVID and kind of what happened with restaurants, we pivoted, and we partnered up with, with Bo and Josh, and we came back in in twenty twenty and got the plan that you all have in front of you approved for Sunset Club, where we were utilizing the existing buildings. When we initially made that submission, we were utilizing the barn over here, as well as the corner auto shop over here. Unfortunately, in October of twenty twenty, there was a fire at that building, and it had to be torn down. So, as a result, we modified our submission and kind of made it open sand with a bocce court on it at the moment, which is shown, and with the thought that we would come back at a future time when we understood what we might want to do there. So, now, after a couple of years being open, you know, we initially had some designs that we had talked about with, with, with some folks in town about doing a, a smaller one-story structure on the corner. But the more we kind of talked to our guests and got some feedback, we realized that it really didn't make sense to do something like that. People really enjoy having their, their feet in the sand and feeling like they're part of the nature. And, but we did realize is we really do need something that, that can keep the guests out of the elements. Our first summer, it was excessive heat. You know, it's, it's three o'clock in the afternoon, it doesn't matter if you have an umbrella, it's coming in at the angle, and people were just getting fried. And then, this last summer, as I'm sure everyone here is aware, it was the rain, constant. And so, to give a few examples, we, we had a five-year-old birthday party that had booked a small section of the sandy area for thirty or forty people, and because of a chance of rain, we had to shut down the actual restaurant, because the actual structure where the barn is can only support about forty seats in there. So, if there was a chance of rain and somebody had wanted to be, and had, we committed to that, we had to shut down the restaurant just so we could accommodate them inside, even though in that particular case, it ended up not raining. And we end up losing out on, on that. Additionally, we've had a graduation party where we had to do the same situation, and a memorial for life after a funeral, where the same situation happened. And then, we've also had the situation where it seems like it's a beautiful day, everyone's outside, they're eating, and then a passing cloud comes through and rains, and you're stuck with a situation where you're already full inside, you've got guests eating, they have nowhere to go, and now they're stuck with a situation of, do they, one, just leave and not finish their food, or do they eat it in the rain? So, what we are hoping to get approved on the corner is a forty-by-forty foot pavilion, just a large, open, and I believe there's some pictures in the submission. Do you all have those, or?
Let me grab a couple, just see if I have any. Thank you. There's another angle on it.
Sorry, it's not on the actual site, but it gives you a sense. It's a pre-engineered, open, covered pavilion that would allow us to move seats when necessary under there for the elements and just provide a better situation for our guests. The plan is still actually to remove the bocce courts, which right now are effectively impervious, because it's like a stone dust, and return it back to sand and use ADA beach matting to kind of have a path through it, so that we can still accommodate ADA when required, and it can also be removed in the off-season as well. And so, that is the first item. The second item, if you look on the site plan, there is a removable merch, merchandise shed that we utilize to sell hats and sweatshirts. Shortly after we opened, we realized that there was a lot of demand for that, and we had nowhere to put it, and so we dropped a eight-by-twenty merchant, I actually have some pictures of it, because I don't believe those were included in there. So, that was put on the site, right adjacent to the kitchen area, and we were made aware that we were not supposed to have dropped that there without approval. We were very gracious that the planning board and others allowed us time to come up with our plan for the corner and come in and, and, and ask for the approval of that shipping container on-site there. And then, the third thing that we are asking for, similar, as we've learned over the last couple of years, is, you know, the, the elements in the winter are pretty rough on our equipment. We have a lot of chairs, umbrellas, and all these things that we have nowhere to put in the off-season. And so, we're asking for an area in the back of the property that's shown as refrigerated and dry storage sheds, to put down some removable sheds that we could store all of our equipment in the off-season, so that it doesn't get rusted and destroyed. And the most important thing, we are not asking for any additional seating, we are not asking for any additional density, parking, anything like that. We are not, we are only just trying to make the experience better for the existing guests. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Great. Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Hold on.
Someone, we had a neighbor, you know, took some thoughts on this, and it says that on your website, there's capacity for three hundred people?
Yes, I believe Steve sent that email. Yeah, so, we, we have a hundred and sixty-three seats, I believe, is what it is approved for.
One fifty-eight.
Oh, sorry, one fifty-eight. And then, what we have listed on there is not for a seated event. We've never had anything close to that. It was something that was kind of put out there, just to make sure we got inquiries for anything. My understanding was if, in talking to my partners, because I'm not in the day-to-day of, of the restaurant, was that if somebody were to request something like that, we would, it would only be a standing option, it wouldn't be a seated event, and then they would have to provide us some sort of proof that they have some sort of additional parking or bussing in order to accommodate that.
That's a big concern, because there's fifty-seven parking spots.
Correct. And that's, so, we would not be able to accommodate that. And we've actually had a situation where we've had people bring in buses. There was a restaurant group, what was the group?
Row thirty-four.
Row thirty-four, that did their employee kind of appreciation event, and they came in a number of buses. But we've never had anything in that situation. It's more of just, we want to catch all, just to hear what people might have interest in.
Yeah, right now, over the, like, right outside of the wood platform, there's some type of awning over there right now. What is that material? I'm trying to remember back. I thought it was a more permanent.
They're shade sails.
They're just, so they just come down in the winter?
Yeah, as soon as it starts getting windy enough, like, right around now, we gotta get them down.
Yeah, but people can go under there, right? When it?
Yeah, but as Vincent kind of alluded to, with the angle of the sun, especially towards the afternoon, it goes towards the marsh, and it's, I mean, we've tried umbrellas, we've tried angling umbrellas, we've tried putting umbrellas under the shade sails. It's just, you know, in July. Just to give you a sense, those shade sails are not impermeable. Water goes through them. They're, they're just.
Yeah, because they're not continuous.
Yeah, because it, well, they're not continuous, and the actual shades themselves. If they were, if they were solid, they would create too much of a sail and tear, so they have to have the ability to let the air through to some extent. So, it does help with a little bit of shading of the sun if you're at the right angle. But from the rain, it might divert it a little bit, but you, you still, you still get so. It still pitches into the middle. Exactly, and it leaks, leaks through it, because it's not something that we can put something permanent there, because it, just the wind would just tear it apart otherwise, if it was, it would essentially become a sail.
Have you guys done a, a sun shading study?
We have not. Although, it's, it's interesting, because of the site, the, the sun moves, you know? So, in the summer, when it's at its busiest, you'll have the sun setting probably at about this angle right here, while today, it's probably setting roughly at about this angle. The thought is to angle the, so that the peak is facing north and south, so that the lowest side is facing where the sun is normally hitting, because if we just based it with the peak facing towards the sun, it would be a waste of time, the sun would just. would just come straight in, come on it.
That might be wise. I will add, as an architecture student, they gave us, here's a hockey rink, you gotta cover it, you gotta show the stat, sun angles it four times during the year, go figure it out and draw it. And the shade isn't going to be directly under. And so at the time of peak use, mid-afternoon, evening, if you build this and you put it in this position, is most of the shade going to be in the parking lot and not actually under the structure?
Right.
So is that, does that meet your?
No, we, we definitely want to make sure that that is the case, and, and that is a good point, and I'll bring that up too. The, the company that manufactures these, it's essentially a pre-engineered system.
Yep.
So what we would do is we would drop the eight pilings in, and then they show up, and it all comes as a kit, and in about three days, they throw the thing up, and it's, meets all the hurricane codes and, and building codes, and they, they put them up all over the state.
So on, on this structure, is that what we're calling it, pavilion? We're calling it pavilion?
That's what they call it on their website, so that's kind of what I've gone with.
The pavilion, it's forty by forty. Which way are the gable ends facing? I can't tell from the, are we facing, is the gable end pointing towards Plum Island Boulevard?
They're going to face mostly north and south, is, is the thought. Slightly curved, but so that way, the, the slope down is most protecting from the sun. Because if we, the alternative that we've talked about was where you can see that the, the peak is kind of open straight through, is maybe closing that in so that it's a solid triangle. It's just, it's an option they have in there, which would then allow kind of the same shade to be all around.
And it looks like it is exactly ten feet, the minimum clearance. What part is ten feet? Is it the post? Is it the overhang? Is it?
It's from the, the bottom of the post where, where it connects to, to the, I guess, the top of the.
So there's no overhanging that?
We, uh, in which section here? Here, I'll show you the picture.
Yeah, no, there's, well, the ten feet from there.
So the ten feet run from there till, till the bottom here, and then over here, obviously, it's a little lower where it curves right here, but to the, to the top where the wood goes across to the bottom is ten feet.
No, that's not what I meant, I'm talking about the ten feet setback from the road.
Oh, 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 oh. That's from the edge of the, of the building, of the overhang.
The truth.
Correct. And the ten feet is from the side road, because I guess the, only one of them is considered the front road, which since the, the majority of it is on Plum Island Boulevard, is Plum Island Boulevard, so we're set back twenty feet from Plum Island Boulevard, and then ten feet, I'm sorry, from Old Point Road.
I think you have.
Twenty feet from Old Point Road and, and ten feet from Plum Island.
So it needs a setbacks, basically?
Yes. And it's obviously seat-through, so it's kind of.
Were these two lots combined into one lot? Are they still?
They were combined into one lot. At the time, it was, it was a requirement as part of the approval process that they be deeded, and I have the deeds where they were combined into one lot.
Any physical structures underneath? Are there like tables and chairs you plan to do, or are you just planning to keep this empty? What's the plan?
The, the plan is to have it empty with just sand underneath it, and then as needed, if, you know, like I said, if there's a birthday party and it looks like it's going to rain, move the picnic tables underneath and have them have their events underneath.
So the, the occupancy would continue to be a hundred and fifty-eight?
Correct. We're not planning on adding. The kitchen can't handle any additional, it was designed for that purpose, so we can't, whether, even if we wanted to, we can't handle additional seats.
So without adding additional seats, is there any different program changes that would, would happen because now you have a pavilion?
I guess the only thing that may end up happening is if, if somebody was going to have, you know, a family reunion as an example there, and they said, well, I want to have it in July, what happens if it rains? And you say, well, here's where you're going to be versus before, it was, well, we'll see, maybe have room inside, but if, if you're more than forty people, we can't put you inside, or you'll be inside and outside with partially being rained on, so it's, it's.
Have you?
That would be, probably be the only change.
If the seating's a hundred and fifty-eight, have you accommodated more on-site?
Not seats, no.
But for standing room or any events, or do people line up?
Not for events, no. Outside of that, I mean, the capacity of the inside is capped, I believe, under fifty.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. But I don't believe there's any sort of fire code capacity outside, but there's obviously the limitation if we can't seat you, you can't, there's a waiting list at that point.
And do you have people lined up to wait on regular occasions?
Yes, on busy days, they will have that, yeah.
So a pavilion wouldn't increase the intensity of use?
It's just displacing, you know, who's already there from one place to the other. It wouldn't add additional seats or additional bodies.
Okay. Is there a plan for, for drainage now that you have a roof? You'll be collecting water instead of just putting it right on the ground?
That's, that's next on the list, is just getting a modification to our, our drainage study to make sure that we don't need to do anything. I mean, one thing, we, we are going to be removing the bocce court, which, which has the stone dust, which we learned real fast, does not allow drainage. It builds right up the first time it rains, so I think we'll be actually eliminating some of the non-pervious by putting it back to sand.
Okay. In terms of, they're giving you generic renderings, you have some photos. I'm just thinking of what, what this looks like from Plum Island Boulevard as you're, as you're driving. With a ten feet from the road, what, what the, it's going to be, you know, the gas station was pushed back, it is ten feet.
The old gas station, just to give you a quick sense on the corner right here, was, I believe, about twelve and a half feet off of the edge of the property line. And then from here, we, we have the ten feet, but then you also have a five or six-foot sidewalk before you're actually on the road.
That was kind of my point. You're entitled to put it there, ten feet is the minimum. Does it have to be so squished on top of the mains? That's the main drag. We don't have any other main drags on the island.
No, I, I agree, but you also have to, the, the, the fact that it's open, you're still seeing right through, no different than what you see there now when you're at the standing position and/or in the vehicle. It's just the four posts on each side that are in the ground. And given that, what's already on the site, there's a little shed there, and there's, there's a boat that's kind of in the middle, it, we really can't push any further without having to kind of modify a lot more of the site.
And you're planning not to put anything to deter the rain or whatever wind from the building down, like a plastic?
The plan is to keep it open.
To keep it open, okay.
Oh, one thing to your ten-foot setback, actually, if you end up looking at the plan, the, the pavilion is slightly angled a bit, so at the narrowest point, it's at ten, but at the back, it's, and, and I don't have the exact, but I believe it's something like thirteen feet at the back.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, where it is open, you know, the structure is open. I think visually, it's not going to feel quite as open. You know, it's a pretty heavy roof, you know, these pavilions are kind of all roof, right? We've seen them in parks before and things like that. So I, I do think it is crowding the street a bit. I understand why you placed it there to try to not have to change too much else. What about, um, yeah, there's a sidewalk there, there's no barrier, right, between?
There's curbing and fence.
There's, there's a curb, then there's about five feet of grasses. And then there is, uh, snow fencing that kind of separates out the property.
So that'll stay.
And then, that'll stay, and then there's another, probably five or six, five feet before you then get to where the posts would be in the ground.
The area of use is all fenced in, right?
Yes.
For your establishment.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking for just, you know, if people are hungry eating on that corner, obviously, we want something so kids aren't just running out there, more so than they could now, at least, you know, because they'll be closer to that corner.
Kids are definitely running around on that corner.
Yeah, I know, I know. I mean, I've been to Sunset real, for, you know, many times, we love it there, but, you know, I, I do think it, it does change this corner a bit. We haven't really talked about the, the new refrigerated and dry storage tent.
Yes.
Is that going to look like this one? Is that like the same, just longer?
It would probably not be that. There is, we did bring in a temporary refrigeration that's half, less than half of that size that, that was rented to kind of put in there. It's eight feet that we had to bring in just because to handle the additional beverages and, and cooling, items that needed to be cooled that just could not get supported in the summer. And so then what would get put along there would, has not been determined yet, what kind of shed or, or container, but it would get dressed up similar to that so that it kind of felt as part of the vibe of, of the, of the restaurant.
But nobody goes in there with staff, right?
Correct.
No windows.
Yeah.
And so if this, this is a, an amendment, an improvement, an evolution, do you guys have a master plan? Is there something else that's, that's planned, or is the Sunset Boulevard?
There was always something planned for the corner when, when, when the fire occurred, and, and we had discussions about it a couple of years ago at that time, not knowing what it was that was going to be there. And, and it's really, Josh, my partner's always said, you know, the guests will tell us what to do, and, and we always had the thought of doing something tall and, and bigger and, and, but that's not what the guests want. They want some, they want to feel like they're.
At the beach.
At the beach. And so that's what we're trying to stick with, and there are no plans beyond this at the moment that I am aware of.
Has parking been an issue at all right now?
Well, the, the, what ends up happening with the parking is when it's full, there's Sunset Boulevard that people can go to. We, we also own the cottage across the street, and we, we do allow, we, we have a commercial parking license, so we'll allow excess parking there if it, if it does overflow, and that ends up, that used to get used by all the restaurants pretty much as just the kind of excess parking for everybody. Now, now we're down one restaurant, but, you know, like everything, going to the beach, doing anything, parking is valuable on the island.
Has anybody ever showed up from the town and counted occupants or had issues with that?
No.
Have you had any complaints from, from neighbors?
We did have a complaint in May. We had a band kind of during Memorial Weekend, there was kind of a kickoff event. Fortunately, the band kind of set up with their speakers facing towards the island, kind of our, we've, we've only had a handful of bands live outside. They decided to point in to the island, and there was, there was a, a couple complaints that came from that. Beau addressed that with the select board, and actually, we had a select board member come out to an event that they had with live music. He could speak to, to what they said.
Yeah, we had decibel readings throughout the course of a wedding, just to, you know, ensure that the direction of the, that the band was playing, the direction of the amplified speakers were as, as unintrusive as they possibly could be and under, you know, Massachusetts state regulations for decibel levels.
And do you guys need a license every time you want a band, or?
No, we have an annual license that is due to be renewed in January.
Through the select board?
Correct.
Are you anticipating speakers in underneath the, the pavilion?
No.
Lighting?
Most likely, there'll be some sort of lighting, whether it's string lighting, we'll run some basic LED lighting, possibly a fan, just to keep, get a little buggy on the island, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I noticed that on the considerations, excuse me, on the restaurant back in, it's like twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, you agreed that the restaurant would be set back at least twenty feet from Old Point Road. Is that a consideration with the pavilion, twenty feet from?
That was the, the, the barn that is, what was considered the restaurant at that approval had to be twenty feet set back from, from Old Point. And we, and this pavilion will also be twenty feet set back from Old Point.
From Old Point, um, okay. So in other words, no, is that what you're saying?
I, I wasn't aware if that would be something that was a consideration of any future. My understanding was it was related to the, the barn structure, which.
Is that now the restaurant?
Yes.
So in, in an L-shaped configuration, typically, they have the choice of choosing which.
Which street, I'm aware.
Which street is the front? So the, the Old Point is the front with the twenty-foot setback, and, and Boulevard would be the side with the ten.
Agreed.
Okay. Who's those? So with that, I'm just going to ask for any public, is there anybody here that would like speak in favor?
I'd just like to speak in the general question, if that's okay?
State your name and address and.
Paul Griffin, I don't, I'm not a homeowner, but I reside with a homeowner five all the way. Griffin, I want to say overall, Sunset Club has been a great neighborhood, I must say that. I only have a couple of questions these guys asked most, and I just want to be sure. Is this a permanent structure, the pavilion?
Correct.
And how high is it?
Twenty-one feet.
Twenty-one feet.
Twenty-two feet.
So it's not going to take away from the reason of the rules there is to see the sunset?
Correct.
Okay. It'll stay there, it'll stay there, all the way to everything?
Yep. Yeah, we had, we'd had discussions of doing a temporary tent, which kind of, last summer, just in the meantime before we came in for this, and it was determined that that would require the same approval process, so we're in for the.
And I will post, what this gentleman said, we call it brainstorm before, that tent does soak through. So we'll post for that. So just a couple of questions, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
You guys asked most of my questions, not yet.
All righty. So.
Do you want another piece for the record?
Yeah, so anybody else in favor? Yes.
Members of the zoning board, Pete Pecos, wonderful to be here. I am speaking to you today, not as a member of the planning board. I've had the opportunity to sit on the planning board through this special permit process, and I've also sat on conservation through the permitting process. And planning, when we look at something, we look at all the details. We look at everything. We spend a lot of time going through. And the reason we do that is we want to make sure that what is presented by an applicant is what ends up at the end. And so I have to express some concerns. We had a, a discussion with the applicant, it was a query in April during one of our meetings, and the applicant came before the planning board to ask us what our feeling would be if a tent were to go there. And there was rendition of a, of a tent, and the planning board had an opportunity to kind of give a straw poll, and pretty much everyone raised concerns about the tent, what the tent would represent, what it would look like, what its appearance would be. And so the applicant was kind of getting a feel for that, that the planning board wasn't too much in favor of that concept, and we were indicating, would it be a minor modification, or would it be a major modification that would require a public hearing? At that point, there was no request to go further with that process. Also during that, that discussion, we had a discussion, I saw, about this merchandise shack. And, you know, quite honestly, you know, this thing didn't drop out of the sky. It was placed there. Electricity was run out to it, poles were cut into it, and it's pretty well advertised, you know, on the exterior. And as a matter of fact, if you look at the structures that are there, I think there's six structures on this site, four of the six have some form of advertisement on them. Now, that might be a concern for some, that might be a concern for others. Again, I am just speaking as a citizen. That just raises a concern for me. There's a martie on the corner, which was part of the original gas station, which was approved, but other forms of advertisement have taken place. And when I asked a representative for the applicant about that, the response was, yeah, we really want to be seen, we want to be out there, which struck a chord to me. You know, part of what planning is responsible for is we're responsible for being the steward of. of the master plan. Now, we've just approved our most recent master plan. And one of the themes that is paramount in the master plan, and citizens say it again and again, is maintaining the quality and integrity of the town. I'm not saying this takes away from the integrity of the town, but it takes away from the natural appearance of the town. And, you know, this is just not the feeling of the planning board. When you look in the appendices of the most recent master plan, again and again and again, people say the reason that they're here in Newbury is they they love the natural aspect of the community. On the other side of this boulevard is a marsh area. Across the road is a national wildlife refuge, 4,600 acres. People come from across the country to visit that parcel. Yesterday I was going down Old Point and I saw, you know, two fellows out front across from this location with cameras, you know, capturing nature. I mean, this is part of the integrity of the community. The planning board, when we looked at the the tent, we were concerned with it. We were concerned visually what it was going to do. We think we've done a good job with negotiating traffic. Traffic enters in through Old Point, it comes out on the turnpike, you know, definitely bottleneck's there because that's the only way off the island, so all of the traffic coming off Newton Boulevard has to deal with the exiting traffic. From my understanding, there haven't been any major accidents, there hasn't been any significance that's been reported to the planning board via the police department. But, you know, venues increase. There's seating capacity than the standing capacity, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well. I understand the intent of what the applicant is trying to do, but I also look for the balance. You know, at night, lights, I mean, we're on a migratory pathway. And if you love birds, I love birds, I was raised with that sort of approach through college, that affects, that affects things. And, you know, we're in a sensitive area, eco-sensitive area, and I think that needs to be considered. So those are my comments with regards to this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, anybody else would like to speak? Tomorrow we have an email.
Email, from Stephen. I have a few comments in opposition to the proposed modifications. I will welcome the chance for rebuttal for the ZBA rules during the meeting if I'm able to attend. The reasons include sightline of traffic, increased use, parking, need for permits from the planning board and Concom. I'm unsure about the jurisdiction of the ZBA and I acknowledge that some of my comments may need to resolve, especially by the planning board and Concom. Regarding the sheds, the merchandise shed sits on the ground, it has electricity, it was not part of the previous approvals and it's existing only because the applicant placed it without gaining a permit from the Concom or planning board. And temporary storage shed also appears to sit on the ground. During March 1, 2023, planning board meeting, the merchandise structure was characterized as not regal by planning board member, see YouTube at 54 minutes, 30 seconds with address. Selling merchandise is a change of use and should not be allowed. Cursory drive by seemed to show that it was in an active storefront and not only stored for merchandise. Please ask the applicant if buyers attended, entered the facility. Structure sits on the ground. I believe the ZBA also is going to review and deny any new structures that sit on the ground. The pavilion, I also object. Looked at the Concom and planning board will probably have to consider some of all these comments that concern sightline, structures likely to obstruct the visuals for car, bikes, exiting Old Point Road create unsafe condition. Visual concern agenda, when a tent was once proposed, planning board meeting 3123, downward folding flaps were being considered as an option during wind and rain events. Will this be proposed again? If so, please disallow them. Plans must be exact about the location of the structure. Rearranging seating, the applicant maintains that there will be no increase in seating capacity and that seating will be relocated under the structure only when the heat and rain requires this. That strains I'm not sure what that word is.
Tuttality.
Tuttality. Capacity, 300 people. Sunset Club website says the private events for up to 300 can, people can be accommodated. Sounds like a group size inconsistent with previous use. Any, and in any event, they trigger additional parking requirements. From the website, private and semi-private parties, 30 to 300 people, please inquire. Not a dance floor nor a bandstand. If approved, the structure should be seating only and not for use as a dance stand or bandstand for music. It should be seating only. Should there be a plan for how temporary seating during and after heat and rain will be managed? A written plan can be enforced. I am not in direct butter. Our request that the applicant's request for sheds and pavilion be disallowed. Stephen. 1114.
So with that, is there any other questions?
No questions.
You said the refrigerated and dry storage was eight feet, but you're you're requesting for a 30 foot. It's eight feet in the, oh, wait, sorry. So it is eight feet by 30 feet now?
No, it's not that. We're we're asking to be able to add some additional storage for, because right now we can't put any chairs or umbrellas. There's no room for any, anything to get stored in the off season. Unfortunately, requires us to replace a lot of it every year now.
And you want the the merch shack to set? Oh, sorry. I think it's just missing from
Correct.
The description of this piece. This mentions just the remove, the 80, the eight by 20 removable storage and the pavilion. It doesn't mention the merch shack. I mean, I see it on the plan, so I'm assuming maybe that just was missed there.
Yes, correct. It should be, I thought it was planned, but it is.
Oh, wait, that, the eight by 20 is this one.
Yes, that is what
This is 30 by
Correct, it's the, it's the 30 by 7.
That's what's up, yeah, okay.
That changes, that stays.
Yeah, I think what this person in his email was asking is can you go inside of the merch shack? Would you go?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what he was asking.
Oh, oh.
But can buyers go through?
Oh, can buyers go through?
Yeah, I think that's what he was asking.
Okay, so in in review, I think there's a few things to look at here. I think, and they gave a plausible idea, you certainly have the need, you've well represented that. I think, I think there's a few other things. I would like to see a shadow study. And that should be fairly easy these days.
I'd like to see one too now. Thank you.
And I'd like to just check to make sure the shadow isn't, that the intended use, that you're going to get out of it and something isn't going to change
Right.
In the future. I'd like you to restate in in the letter, the intensity of of purpose and use. And specifically that the, that a pavilion wouldn't increase the use. I think we we would and should look at signage in terms of what is allowable by the bylaws. I think your parking is, has not changed since the previous plan and is there. You've clearly listed the lot coverage, which has changed.
Such as the sheds that were added?
The pavilion was added to the lot coverage, but in, to be consistent with the original plan, with, that has the the removable kitchen container, that was not considered as part of the coverage because it can, it's a temp, considered not a permanent structure. So to be consistent with that, we did not include the the sheds and the merchandise shed under, under that.
If if it's hooked up and it's got utilities to it, then I think it's, you can call it temp all you want, but it's got permanent.
That's fine. We were just trying to be consistent with what was approved the last time. I'd be glad to, I mean, we're still so far below, so.
True, but I I would say that any, anything that is, that is manmade, that covers the ground, gets included with the lot coverage. And so I'd ask you
Should we include dumpsters then or?
No, I mean, the dumpster can move, right? But the sheds, in terms of structures that you're intending to use as part of the facility of a building of, you know, the wood platform, if it's, if it's covered, if you can't let the rain through and rain hit the ground, then we we count it, you know, someone has a deck and it's open, it's not
No problem.
But in in terms of houses, I was talking about two decks, sorry about that. If we have two decks, then one deck is open, the second deck is covered, that second deck becomes FAR, where the lot coverage is anything that is manmade that covers the site, which is including stairs, decks, sheds, pavilions.
So should the pavilion be considered FAR? My
Yes.
I thought FAR was conditioned interior space.
Well, I'm not so much after FARs, I'm after lot coverage. I'm saying that, trying to make a difference between what was technically covered and not. If it covers the ground, I think you're, you're Do you have wood walkways?
Or maybe mats?
Okay, so I don't think a Moby mat counts, but if you had a deck or if you had wood, wood walkways on the side, then then that would, that would count. There won't be any of that pavilion after that. And then it asked that, or proposed that we go to a continuance because I think we need to just double check and reread the previous approvals. If if it goes forward with the motion, we need to make sure everything is in keeping. So I don't, I'd like to go back to the original restaurant proposal to the Sunset Club proposal to to what was the process to understand that. And I think for me, the only thing is if if the shadow study is putting a lot of shadow on Plum Island Boulevard, or even, even though you own the property at the front of Plum Island Boulevard across the, was it McLeod Way there? Just would want to make sure that that the the structure that's intended to be open for use and is represented as an airy pavilion isn't actually casting shadow that it shouldn't be.
Is there a specific time or year or just some?
So normally a shadow study is done at the four points of the year so that you can get the sun angle and it fits at, you know, simple study is done four times, a simple, the second level of study is it's done during those four days of the year, but it's done, you do a morning, noon and night kind of study. And again, if somebody, and maybe the pavilion people who inhabit, have a program, it's pretty simple for them to to place it with the latitude, longitude, press a button and get what you need.
I've seen them done before, so I'm assuming they must be able to do this.
Yep, and then in terms of the purpose, in terms of making sure everything is in order, we'd like to, there's things we need, we need the time to review. There were a couple of other points that were brought up that we'd like to check and think through.
Could I, could I maybe recommend one more thing?
Yep.
Is some information about the lighting that's proposed?
Sure.
You know, ideally there, you know, there's a shield on that or I guess whatever you're
I'm not sure, if you've been there at night, you've noticed we kind of use very light, very downward facing lights that we specifically didn't want to create any, any light, that light pollution, especially to our neighbors, you know, tents that are adjacent, so anything that we would put there would be something similar to what's in place now.
Yeah, I think just having it documented is probably helpful, just because some of the neighbors have commented about it, so just to have it documented.
And if you gone there, you would then go to Concom?
Correct.
And planning.
And planning.
So as part of the site planning review, the previous, there was a proposal for a tent that was brought before the planning board?
It was not a formal proposal, it was just a
Informational.
Informational, kind of how would you guys view this?
Okay, so then we're, we're here at the ZBA before going to the planning board?
Right, because if you, you guys need to approve the use of this pavilion. If you, if you weren't, then there would be no point in coming before the planning board, but if you do, then it goes to the Concom and site plan.
And in terms of typically what we run up against is certain people have arguments against proposed developments for which we don't have the purview or the authority. We certainly take into account all comments made to us, but there are some things that are not, like conservation, someone's making a comment about a plan to us about drainage, if it's, if it's totally inadequate and we can see it, we'll certainly bring it up and request that it's, it's a nonstarter. But for the final or review, it's not in our purview to review and approve. So what would the planning board would be in your jurisdiction of a pavilion, would lighting be?
Lighting would be, visual impact would be drainage, stormwater management.
Okay, so I think what we'd also like to do is just check the box with the planning board as to what, you know, your site plan review would cover that would, that would not, that we wouldn't be asking questions on
Maybe not like
Like that. Right. But we also want to make sure, if we have a big issue about it, we want to make sure it's covered, but it's not our purview to review and not in our capacity to review.
Was there, yeah, was there in a butter's letter that they put on it? I didn't get the package.
Is that all?
Everything in there?
Okay. Thanks.
So are these letters in favor or are these?
No, those are the receipts.
Those are just the receipts from the admirers and when I, we
Okay.
If it would help, we could have some people come in, in favor.
Well, I think we're, we're trying to be good to all the residents and be as helpful as we can to all the residents, but also want to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, of course. And we, if needed, take the time to make sure that we get things right and it only serves the property owners, that if we take our time and cross D's and dot the I's and checks and hear from people and bring the issues together, it'll be for the better of everybody. And and if something does get done, it's no, it's not a, we don't set precedence by approving one project and then having someone come up and say, look what they did. But at the same time, we want to make it right so that if you do come back and there are or were issues, it makes it harder the next time. So I'm going to request that you guys ask for, or we have a continuance to the next meeting.
Sure.
And at that time, I think we'll be prepared to make a decision with all the information that we have.
Great. You would ask for a continuance, huh?
Great.
No, can I ask one more question?
End of the meeting.
It's going to bother me until the next meeting. So I'm still confused on the merch shed. How does that work? Do I walk up to the merch shed and speak at the window or do I go in through the door and pick up t-shirts?
There's a second picture that might
I go in?
Light on that. It was initially just a kind of a walk. I don't know if I may
So I can actually walk, my question's pretty simple. Can I walk in the merch shed?
You can.
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, I think that'll show the picture there of the
I'm looking at the back. Oh, I see.
Yeah, this is the part that
He was wondering how you throw t-shirts.
Initially, initially we had them kind of hanging on the walls. We initially had them hanging on the walls inside and there was just so much, you know, people wanted them and then we had nowhere to store them and then the boxes were all over the place and people were running into attics and, and, you know, then stuff was getting destroyed up there and so you know, we apologize that we put it there, not, not having asked first, but
And that's only open when the restaurant's open.
Correct. We greatly underestimated that people would want sweatshirts and t-shirts and hats and we greatly underestimated that, so it's just, you know, a, a, a natural evolution of what we, you know, what the, again, the customers kind of let us know that they want.
Do you guys wear, you can wear the merch tonight?
Yeah.
You got one there. You got, you got one on the shoulder, right?
It wasn't intentional.
Don't have any other clothes now.
Okay, so we need to figure out the next meeting as we come up to
Your next meeting will be
The 21st.
21st.
Of December.
Of December, yeah, so.
Is everybody here on the 21st of December? Yes, 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 yes. Yes, 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 yes. Is Chrissy here? Is town hall open?
Town, town was open, I don't know what Chrissy's schedule was.
I, I spoke to Chrissy earlier, she said the next meeting would be the 21st if we needed to be on it.
Okay.
No, she didn't say for sure she'd be there, but she did mention that that would be the next one.
So we're going to propose a continuance to December 21st at 7:30 here at town hall.
Great.
So is there a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to continue the decision to allow applicants to gather additional information, shadow study, purpose use, lot coverage, and I think the drainage and any other stuff will be taken care of by the planning board.
Correct.
Here, December 21st, 7:30, town hall.
Second.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. All right, we'll see you on the 21st. You have some work to do, you'll talk to the planning board, we'll meet again. Yeah, I mean, it would be helpful was if your information was in at least the week before the 21st, so we had a.
I'm going to get on tomorrow.
Yeah. All righty, thank you.
It doesn't take too long. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. All righty, thanks for your comments. All right, Mark, now I'm ready.
All right. Public hearing continued. Brian and Helen Boue, 134 Northern Boulevard, Vermont. Applicants are requesting a special permit finding for relief of section 97-4D-5C02 upward extension and from section 97-4D for a change of use of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief made required under the town of Newbury bylaws to allow the purpose use project in order to alter renovate preexisting commercial restaurant store to a single family dwelling with an increase in height of the conformance of a property located at 134 Northern Avenue, Vermont, Newbury, Mass. Continued from September 14th, 2023.
Ready. So everybody has, did you receive a draft, the final draft today of the, of the decision? And Martha has printed out the decision with the edits on it. Is the email that was sent this afternoon, Martha, the same as the edited?
So the email, my, my understanding is that Chrissy sent the versions with all the red lines already accepted and incorporated, but she printed out these red line versions so you could actually see.
Okay, so in the edits, like the first edit is procedural history number five, opposition of the project, opposition to the project copy that I looked at did not have that changed
Okay, so maybe she sent out this one.
Okay, so then does the decision match? Okay, so everyone should be reading the 11 by 17 copy with the, with the edits on it, is the most current. So there's a few like general edits made to procedural history number five, number six, pretty straightforward. The next is now down at four, decision. It appears that we need to recall who made the second, and Mario made the motion. Michelle, what do you? So Michelle, you sat on this one because Jack had been absent and so you were setting in the motion?
Yes.
So that needs to be inserted into this date now, 11 version.
And then.
We can't write that in initially? That doesn't, we need to have it documented?
I can revoice the page, it's still signed.
Oh, yeah. Just, you know, so that we have to extend another?
Yeah, no, it needs to, it needs to get done.
Beneath that, it says out of scale? Is that where you're?
Yeah, I, I previously did not.
Okay.
And I had said the math. So the upward extension of a flat roof with a deck on top of the roof creates a dwelling massing that is out of scale or not in scale. My word was not in scale.
Right, this version has not in scale.
I had out of.
Right, the, yeah, the red line version is out of, that was my word.
Okay.
And Eric said not in scale, which is what the, the original says.
Okay, so Martha has the, okay.
Thank you.
So in terms of reviewing and proofing, the front end of the procedure and the history is all there, what I'd like is just the reading of, for the decision to make sure that that's, that meets the intent of the denial. And the point of the paragraphs was to state that it was denied, that we do recognize that the height increase met the Plum Island PIOD, but the extension proposed a significant increase in dwelling height, creating a structure of three enclosed stories where the PIOD's district is limited to two stories. The upward extension of a flat roof with a roof deck on top of the roof creates dwelling massing that is not in scale with the height and size of the existing dwellings in the adjacent neighborhood. The scale of proposed dwellings as designed within the exist, with the existing nonconforming hydroelectric setback would limit adequate light and air compared to the existing dwellings in the neighborhood. The board additionally determined that the proposed dwelling did not meet the intent of section 97-4D1, purpose of the PIOD to limit the expansion of nonconforming single family and two-family structures as to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems with the density and intensity of use greater than the existing dwellings in the neighborhood. So the point was to, to bring it back to the, to, to recognize that the height was met, but although the height was met, the design was not in keeping with the existing neighborhood and specifically was not in keeping with the purpose and intent of the PIOD.
True.
Yeah.
All right. Other edits or comments? So if the, if that draft has it and there are no other comments, is there a motion to accept as edited?
Make a motion to accept the decision of Brian and Helen Boue.
As, as edited.
I think this has to be you, Michelle, because you're the owner.
Do, second?
Second?
Yep.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have the actual copy to sign there?
Yeah. So what's this gets? Yeah, they have 20 days. Have they mentioned anything about it?
I don't know, I think they may have.
Oh, okay. Because I know they were, like, before they were ready to, like, cancel the whole thing, even if, you know, before we continued it sometime, sometime.
All right, excellent.
Next one we've been Stephen Matthews, 19 Independence Way, West Plum Island. An applicant is requesting a special permit finding for relief of section 97-4D-5C02 upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the purpose use project. The lot consists of a preexisting nonconforming single family dwelling that was raised in order to construct a new single family dwelling with an increase in height on the property located in Independence Way, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass. 01951. Continued from October 19th, 2023.
Ready. Anybody that has questions or comments?
I don't think I did.
So there were a couple of things.
Yes.
Number four under Timothy, number four says Timothy Meehan is the owner, but it's actually Stephen Matthews. So that should be changed.
But was it Meehan, the guy from the surveying company?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so just write the word owner?
Yes, if, if, if Meehan was here representing the applicant, then he would be the applicant's representative. Was he present?
I think he was, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so strike owner.
We have one other item that we had asked for in terms of documentation of existing I'm not sure we got follow up for, does the assessors keep old cards? Can you look at them?
They do keep old cards.
Because if properties for sale, the house was there, there was discovered to be a leak of the fuel tank, whatever, the town, in terms of the purchase and sale agreement, took the house away. So there's no, there's no house.
Right.
And we had asked and just wanted to confirm of the number of bedrooms.
Right, I think anecdotally someone called at the meeting and said, oh yeah, it was a two bedroom house, but.
Yeah, I think we asked them to submit documentation on that.
Yeah, everything else checked out. Ground floor remains as presented, ConCon for you, not yet, for no existing bedrooms. And then there was, there was discussion about the dune and whether the dune actually changed or would change with the tree. So other than the one edit of owner being struck out for, between Timothy Meehan and Art surveying, the decision appears to be in order with the one caveat that we had asked for confirmation of the number of existing bedrooms, which I thought would be easy to provide if the town had a purchase and sale agreement or had something to that effect Can we do, Martha, can we accept the motion as written?
As amended with the one change from.
As the, yeah, with one amendment as noted. And then note that it's, it's. We're still looking for confirmation of this request.
So do you want to end that as a condition or do you want to?
No, it was meant to be a check, please submit proof and we'll, you know, we'll proceed to draft the decision and we'd like that presented before we, we get to review the decision. And we're hoping to, to be added to the file.
Call it a day.
Call it a day. I mean, it's, there's, the proposed project meets all the requirements and setbacks and the FDRs and the height and because the lot is a decent size. So there's not much of an issue there in any neighbor's contention about a dune being eroded away, there's no change, there were no changes to the grade whatsoever on the plan along the property line. So we were just doing due diligence to, to check since. And, and we have requested and made and asked for all existing dwellings or structures to be documented before us so that, so that we're not just accepting the word, that we're, we've got something to, to go by in the application, everyone has something to see. I didn't see anywhere in here, that's it. So can we, can we approve this with the one edit and then add that it's, it's to be held or can we just defer this until? What do we do to move this along if it's appropriate?
Well, we can check on that, probably won't be able to do that until after Thanksgiving because Chrissy's out and I'm out next week as well. Once the decision is signed, it doesn't have to be filed with the court for two weeks or you have 14 days to do it, so.
So we're going to ask that the decision be edited, that, I'm going to propose that the decision be edited, we make a motion to accept it. be edited, we make a motion to accept it, that we request the applicant and/or if the town can find the card verifying that the existing structure, previous structure contained two bedrooms, if so, then, then that documentation plus the application, the decision to be signed can be left in the box for typical signing procedure.
Okay.
And if the documentation isn't found or can't be found, or, or somebody can't get to it, then the decision will never make it to the box to be signed. And we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for, for next month. Is that appropriate?
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, to do it, yeah. I don't think I make a motion. Go for it.
Uh, I make a motion to accept the decision with the edits discussed and, um, to, for either the applicant or the town to include the old assessor's card that states it was two bedrooms. And then at that point, well, the decision will be signed.
Yeah.
Is there something?
Nope.
I second that concession.
Motion. All right, thank you. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's Jack, Michelle, and myself. All righty, is there anything else on the agenda, Mario?
That's it. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.